Recording in progress.
I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Do you want to, I can do that, Councilmember Joe Little. Councilmember Sander. Councilmember Budge is absent at this time. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
And Mayor Pulipati.
Here. I'd like to request a city clerk for the video recording announcement.
So first, we need to adjourn from the closed session and do a report out from the city attorney.
Okay. Can I get the report out from Adam, please?
Thank you. This afternoon, the city council met in closed session, took up one item of anticipated litigation, received updates from, and provided direction to its legal counsel.
Thank you. And now, can I request a city clerk for the video recording?
Yes, so we are now in our journey to our regular meeting, and we have a full council here.
Recording stopped.
Minus Councilmember Budge.
Full minus Ms. Budge. Okay.
I do anticipate that she will be joining us momentarily via Zoom. For our cable announcement, we have the meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, September 4th at 7:00 PM and Saturday, September 6th at 1:00 PM on Metro Cable, Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/MetroCable14 and on the city's website.
Thank you. I'd like to request Walt Little from St. John Vianney's Catholic Church to please lead the pledge and give the invocation today. And I'd like to request everybody to remain standing for the pledge and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anne Frank wrote in her diary, "In spite of everything, I still believe that people are good at heart. I simply can't build up my hopes on a foundation consisting of confusion, misery, and death. I see the world gradually being turned into a wilderness. I hear the ever approaching thunder, which will destroy us too. I can feel the suffering of millions, and yet, if I look into the heavens, I think that it will all come out right. That is, cruelty will end, and peace and tranquility will return. So let our prayers, this evening and every evening, be that what we do and who we are as servant leaders may always contribute to the goals of peace, tranquility, and healing, not just in our community, but in the world." Amen.
Thank you. And looks like we have some new employees here today, so I'd like to call on Edgar Medina and Maria to introduce the new employees.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Pulipati, council members. Edgar Medina, Polk Corps Department. As is customary, we like to introduce new employees to the city council, as they are going to be the face of a lot of the projects that you'll be seeing. So tonight, I have the privilege of introducing Jonathan Luhano, who is one of our new Assistant Civil Engineers in the CIP or the Capital Projects Division, who's going to be helping on some of these projects that we have under design and under construction. He's actually been here for approximately six months, and we were able to lure him from El Dorado County. So with that, I'd like to introduce him and have him speak.
Hello. So originally, I'm from, I was born and raised in the Central Coast, moved up to Sacramento to attend Sac State. Ended up graduating, and I've been in Sacramento area since then. So as I already mentioned, I've been, I've worked for the city of Elk Grove, and I've worked for El Dorado County. Now, I have six months with the city of Rancho Cordova. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Maria Lopez, Operation Maintenance Manager. I'm pleased to introduce to you our newest member of Public Works, Miguel Carrillo. Miguel has supported our maintenance division for many years as a contractor, always bringing professionalism and pride to his work. His experience and commitment make him an excellent fit for our department, and we're excited to welcome him as part of the city family. At this time, I'd like to invite Miguel to share a few words.
Thank you, mayor and council members. I've had the great privilege of serving Rancho Cordova since 2016, and I'm truly grateful for the opportunity to join the Public Works team. And I'm looking forward to contributing, continuing that service and contributing the important work that this department does for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you senior or junior? Six months or over?
Just started, three months.
Thanks, and welcome. We'll now move to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor the point on the agenda when the items will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provision of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Can I ask the city clerk to announce public comment?
Yes, we'll start with Larry Ladd. Following Larry will be Sue Covey, Sean Mungan, James Garcia, and Helen Wayland-Bachal.
Larry Larry Ladd here. As most of you old timers know, for years now, I've come in with fancy colored diagrams and notes about scientific issues about the Aerojet Superfund site and ask you to archive it. But now, those problems have spread to other jurisdictions, so I have a 35-page study here that isn't going to you. It's going to go to a physician over at UC Davis Health instead. So that's what I wanted to pass on to you. But just for general information, two issues have, oops, have to do with TCE and one has to do with perchlorate. TCE and other chlorinated solvents, it is the Trader Joe's warehouse going in south of Hazel. As far as I know, it's not in the city of Rancho Cordova. I know it's expanding though, so I don't know if the expansion's there because the documentation is in the Fair Oaks Library. So I will be knocking on doors to find out all that stuff, but it's not knocking on your door. The next TC thing, I was sitting in the Folsom Clinic. A lady next to me with lupus said, you know, "I want to buy a house right next to the new Folsom Clinic, south of 50." And I said, "Well, don't buy a house on top of, with your condition, don't buy a house on top of Area 40 because it outgasses trichloroethylene." And I, so this, that's what this is about. The doctor who's there asked me a year ago to start coming up with identifying precisely who's most genetically susceptible. And it's here, he's a professor, he can pass it on to a student, but it's the framework of what you look for in that. And then perchlorate, you all heard the news about the big fireworks explosions in Espardo, and so now that's Yolo County's problem. And I talked with them, said, "Go talk to Elon Musk about the McGregor site in Texas." So for the time being, those are the three main issues, and you all don't have anything to do with it. Good for you. That's progress. The more working on it, the better.
Next speaker is Susan Covey. Sue Covey, Sue, you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sue Covey, and I live at 2213 Glen Air Court, a street that was once a quiet cul-de-sac but has been disrupted by the operation of a short-term rental at 2217 Glen Air Court. Since this property was purchased in October of 2021, it has been continuously rented out through Airbnb. This has led to a steady turnover of strangers, multiple vehicles parking throughout the street, garbage that has had to have been picked up by the residents, and unfortunately, two very large parties that cause significant noise, traffic congestion, people milling around, and disturbances late into the night and early morning. Just last week, there was a party, smaller, with just the guests staying at the Airbnb until about 3:30 in the morning, at which time, a neighbor who lives behind the house yelled over the fence to "Be quiet," and shortly thereafter, they at least took the noise indoors. I believe this property may be in violation of Rancho Cordova's laws regarding short-term rentals. From my understanding, the property owner must have a short-term rental permit, and the property must be a primary residence for the owner or a family member for at least six months of each year. However, the listing through Airbnb for the owner states that he lives in Los Angeles, and neither he nor a family member has ever occupied the property. I am concerned that this is not only a violation of city codes, but also negatively impacting our neighborhood with increased noise and traffic, as well as potential declines in our property values. I respectfully ask the city council to investigate whether this property is in compliance with Rancho Cordova's regulations to ensure our neighborhoods remain safe, quiet, and residential. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Sean Mungan. Sean, you'll have up to three minutes.
Mayor, council members. I also live on Glen Air Court, and you've heard pretty much the layout. The area, it was a nice residential area. It's got 13 single-family dwellings on it, and one of them is being used as an Airbnb. When this came to be, we started seeing renters bring their work crews in, and they were using the Airbnb as their hotel room while they were doing either night labor or day labor. And so their hours never were in sync with the rest of the people on the street, and they were disruptive at times. They would often arrive with probably four or five large trucks that would only fit where three trucks could go. So they'd double park, or park down in front of somebody else's house. As mentioned, there was a party on July 11th that ran to about 4:00 in the morning. It was quiet, but the thing that bothered everybody on the street was people milling back and forth because they couldn't all park on the street. So they're parking on adjacent streets. And it wasn't one of those things where you go, "Well, we ought to call the police on this. This is something that's out of alignment," but we didn't do that. I don't think I would not do it next time around, but thank you for this wonderful pamphlet. I will use it to take the non-emergency noise factor and contact the police department so that they can at least reach out and talk to these people about it. They don't usually know this, you know, they're strangers on our street. They come in, they have a job to do, and they do it. They leave, and they're there sometimes as long as three or four weeks. So really, a simple question I have is since our track restrictions expired probably back in the 80s or 90s, and we don't have a homeowners association that bars Airbnbs or any other short-term, we look to you. You're our governing body here, and you're our most immediate people to step in and make sure that we don't start infiltrating communities with commercial properties in a bedroom community. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
David Whatser. I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, if we can have staff.
Yeah, no, appreciate the comments. And I think actually, one of you talked to Mr. Russ Ducharme earlier today, and so he's in the back right there and happy to talk to you kind of after about the concerns and what some of the options are moving forward. And as I will always reiterate, it's always good to call and report. So, thank you.
What, do we have, I thought we had ordinance on this specific thing, right?
We do.
We do.
Yeah. So that's where we need to investigate the.
You have one that requires that they repeated problems with them, that they have to attend a class meeting or something of that nature about renting property in a community. But it's, it's the density. How many of these units are going to start appearing?
Right.
You know, in a subdivision, is it one out of 10 or one out of 100?
Right.
Something like that.
And the big thing is, we need to hear about it so we can start to lock down, because we have to pass stronger ordinance to make sure that we're, we can't have our whole neighborhoods getting used as rental properties. So thanks for coming in. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Gateway.
I think that is the bottom line, though. If in doubt, call to anybody watching this meeting or thinking about this problem. And Sue, I set you up with Russ this morning by email, so I'm glad that worked out. But the next time this happens, don't wait four years, right? Or even four days. Maybe wait four minutes, then call, and just let us know what the problem is, because that helps us get to a solution or figure out if we need to make a policy change.
And Russ is the person in the back. Russ, wait, he's right there.
Next speaker is James Garcia.
Hey, guys. Oh, I'm sorry, James. Hey, guys, can you make sure to go, he's waiting for you guys to go talk to you guys real quick. Yeah, you too. Yep. Yes, please. Wait, this is instantaneous help. You get the guy that runs the show. All right. Perfect. Awesome.
Yeah, definitely glad that you're taking care of them. James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I just wanted to say thank you for Public Works for sending out the crew to fix Roundabout. I noticed that they were working on that today, this afternoon. So after the nice big rig, I decided to chew it up. So just happy that we're making that process known. But it would be great if we could potentially make it a little more permanent instead of just rubber bumpers, because I think it's going to happen again until we have the no commercial traffic on Kilgore as well as Baroque, because that is where they're coming in from. They came north or south on Kilgore, made a right on Baroque, through the residential, and destroyed that on Roundabout, knocked over yield signs, tore up a whole bunch of the rubber bumpers, dragged them down the street, all the way down to Prospect Park. So that was just one. And that was one that was carrying vehicles. So they had Mercedes bins on them. They had a couple other vehicles. I sent all that off to Albert as well as Edgar, so, and Austin. So they're all aware of it. Unfortunately, I did not get a good picture of the door because I was out and about driving, and my son took the pictures, and he didn't get the zoom in on the door. But we did at least get a lot of the accident that was taking place. So just thanks for working on that and getting it fixed, and if we can just improve it a little bit more, especially the no commercial traffic. So, thank you.
Next speaker is Helen Wayland.
I am Helen Wayland-Bachal. What I want to talk about is, I came to the Planning Commission meeting last week. I was dumbfounded to think people on the council said the Cordova Community Council has preferential treatment because they benefit the city. The issue that was brought up was dealing with the billboards. The city approved two billboards on the one property. They only put one in because the other one would have to be removed once Caltrans put the overpass in. And the commission seemed to think that they had a right to retain the second billboard and put it where they wanted to put it. There was a gentleman here from a company that deals with billboards, and he said it was unlawful because of the way in which they were allowing that billboard to be moved. In my opinion, and I'm sure other people agreed too, when you approve something on a particular property and that item is not built, it doesn't mean you get to move it somewhere else. And it seems that one of the members of the Planning Commission came out and said, "Since they benefit the city because of all the activities they do, that they get preferential treatment, and we can bend the rules for them." I think that's appalling, because we know that there are other people who want to do things, and I'm going to bring up again, Danny's again. Danny wants to expand his business with that L-shaped piece of property, and everybody keeps jamming on him that it's part of the Folsom Boulevard plan. The gentleman brings a large revenue in. His expansion of his current business will bring in 10 high-paying jobs. He will be doing fleet repairs. He doesn't keep cars overnight, and the city would benefit with all the tax revenue he would be bringing in. And just because he's not part of the Community Council, the Cordova Community Council, he doesn't get that special privilege. I think that there's a lot of insider stuff going on. Another thing is, when the, when people recluse themselves because of personal interest and they go into the room here, I just happen to see the big screen TV. How do I know when they're back there, they're not texting somebody sitting up here, giving them ideas of things to say? I always thought that when you were declined, you can't be present. It means you're not listening to everything that's going on. You still have a voice afterwards. I think it needs to be sequestered. No other influence allowed to them. So I think we need to reconsider certain things, and I think the Planning Committee needs to be reevaluated who's on it, because I think they crossed the line.
In addition to the public comment that was shared this evening, we also received one public comment from Sue Covey that was emailed to the city council, placed on the city's website, and distributed to the public in a binder in the back of the council chambers. Thank you. That's all the public comment that we have.
Thank you. So we'll go on to council reports, and I'd start with Councilmember Little.
Yeah, sure. I. Busy. We'll go in reverse order. This weekend, I was in South Sacramento to present a proclamation on behalf of, I guess, oh, it is on. Proclamation on behalf of the city for longtime residents, the Yang family. I thought it was going to be, I saw it was at a restaurant. I thought it was going to be like a private dining room, friggin' 250 people. So that was really unexpected. It was basically a wedding. But it was really cool. Councilmember Wang from Sac City was there, because those are her people. And they were, you know, good constituents, good citizens among refugees, and it was an honor to be there. A few weekends ago, I was at the Fall Festival for Grace Missionary Baptist Church, which is a church in my district. They've increased their congregation, doubled in size, since they've had a new pastor, and they've got some issues with the city that they could use some help with, and not like I can do anything, but they were glad to meet me and to have, you know, an in. And yeah, it was great to connect with all the people there in the congregation. Was supposed to go to Sacramento Splash's fundraiser where Pat Hume was speaking. Ended up spending my evening in the hospital. My dad had prostate removal, and they gave him too many painkillers, and he's apparently asking for me. And so I couldn't not go. So I missed the event, and maybe next year. I gave the proclamation at Bear Hall Estates grand opening. That was cool. It's like a cruise ship. They've got everything in there, and it's really, really cool. I had coffee with folks from Folsom Cordova Community Partnership, and going to be doing a tour there of both of their facilities pretty soon. And last but not least, I met with folks, including the Cook Alliance, and a woman that lives in Anatolia who are trying to convince our county board of supervisors to join other counties in doing essentially home kitchens. It's something that they told me, I think 19 counties have either done on a pilot basis or done all the way, and it's not a city issue here because we don't have our own food department. And so, so far, I think there's like two electives in the area that are willing to sign on for them to try and convince the board of supervisors to allow people to make money from their kitchens in a way that doesn't impact the community negatively. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a busy couple of weeks for what you might think would be an August vacation. We did the bikeway opening along Chase Drive, which is fantastic. And I've been getting so many comments from members of the public about how attractive that is and how often we see people using it. I think that's, it was really satisfying to me to have seen that project from inception, from the first thought that we have public property running all the way down one side of that street, and the parkways at the other end of it, to finally seeing it executed. It took a few years to get the money together, mostly not our money, which is also great, but a really, really great connection. So congratulations to everybody who worked on that. It's really appreciated, I think, by the neighborhood. I also attended a California Department of Education, I guess it was a press briefing, is how it was framed, at Williamson Elementary, talking about attendance. Attendance has had some, statewide has had some serious issues ever since the pandemic. And it turns out that our very own Williamson and some of the employees we have at the school district, particularly those who deal with home visits, I think they call that department community engagement, it's like a community engagement project at the school district, have pushed Williamson's numbers up beyond everything else in the district, and actually beyond most other schools in the state. So they've seen an enormous return to school for kids with lower absenteeism, which is why they chose that particular school to do the press conference. That was, it was interesting to get a little statewide attention there. I attended a pancake breakfast for the football team that had, I'm not going to list everything here, but this had remarkable attendance. And there's something about the energy of a place that's reflected in an event like that, that on Saturday morning, it's not just the parents of the football kids who show up for this, but their grandparents, their neighbors, other people from the neighborhood, alumni, teachers, all, all at that place. It was, there was a lot of energy there. And speaking of football, Cordova Lancers are now 1-1. Their first victory, actually, they should have had two victories except for, I very rarely would say this, referee error, which was actually acknowledged later, which is even more remarkable, that the referee would acknowledge it. Literally cost them the game, though. But they beat Sheldon in their first game in overtime. That's kind of, I think, our first sort of north versus south contest, and I just have to point out, North won. We have a lot of kids at Sheldon, obviously. Not in our, not in our city, but a lot of Rancho Cordova kids go to Sheldon. We had a great, successful track meet in clinic and a lot of, a lot of activity. On a typical afternoon at Cordova now, you can stand out there and see six different athletic teams, the band, and other stuff going on after school, taking advantage of facilities that we have helped the school district build and deploy. And those are, it's very satisfying to see that. I've attended meetings at, you know, Secog, Air District, several other agencies. But I have one brief story I want to share, because I've been hearing from constituents for over a year about sort of the pains and perils of seeing kids and some adults on electric bikes and sort of mini motorcycles, right? I myself was making a left on Folsom Boulevard one time and literally saw, as I make my left turn, you know, you're watching, so no traffic is there, oncoming straight at me in the lane I was in was probably a 13-year-old on an electric bike doing a wheelie 50 feet, 100 feet in front of me. I mean, it was not far. It was one of those slam-on-the-brakes moment so that he could swerve around me, because he's in the wrong lane on the wrong side of the fence in the middle of Folsom Boulevard, right? So Friday afternoon, last Friday, no, a week ago, Friday afternoon, I see electric bikes on a softball field at Cordova High School doing donuts in the infield, right? Dust everywhere, so of course, the kids are probably loving it, and they're burning out and doing donuts. Dust is flying everywhere. It just so happens that I had seen those same kids on bikes on. It just so happens that I had seen those same kids on bikes on Chase Drive earlier as I was going towards the high school. And so I took a really cruddy photo of them, a little video that showed here they are on the field and there they go roaring off to the side. These were motorcycles, these were not electric. And I sent that video and about the time I drove through the intersection to our police chief, the next school day, they nabbed both kids and seized both bikes because we have new cameras that are much better than the old cameras and they can identify people at a specific intersection, breaking a law at a specific time. It's not like we proactively watch everything to see if anything goes wrong. But when you have a lead like that, they're capable of following up. This would have been an unsolvable crime or incident, right? Vandalism that we would have been notified about and complained about. And, you know, you just have no leads to do anything with it. But with technology, it's now possible. So all those things that have driven us crazy at that low level, it's now possible to address. So hopefully, after this, we'll have two kids on motorcycles who are safe instead of at risk when they're out there in the community. Hopefully, they learn a lesson. That's my story. And it's one more plug for If You See It, Call, because now we have tools you may not imagine. Thank you for the report.
Thank you, council member. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
God, there's a lot of stuff. I'm going to focus on the major things. One, congratulations Garrett Jr. He's now in college and doing amazing things. And mother and father are very proud of you. Second thing, I went to something that really touched my heart. It's called the OK Group. I don't know if you know this, but 35 years ago, African-American children that were coming out of Cordova High were being, were just not succeeding. They were going to jail. They were just going in a bad direction. So a group of African-American males with the police department started something called the OK Group. It's a multinational group, but it started, its roots were Rancho Cordova. Never heard of this group. So, because the program itself has died. And honestly, I was like, I'm sad it's dead because what a great group that goes there and they, they just mentor. And I think other groups have stepped up in those roles, but it was, it was. So I was asked to come speak and there had to be 250 African-American males that made it because of this group. And they were all like the CEOs. I bought a book for the city, I'm going to put it. He's a world-renowned author. He's writing books about Rancho Cordova and going through the struggles and coming out on the other side. I met a guy that basically helped to invent cybersecurity that now flies in between Zurich and someplace else that sounded very fancy. And I was like, all this came out of Rancho Cordova and it was amazing. One of the first multimillionaires African-American come out of our city is based there and he owns a couple of properties still in Rancho Cordova. Just, I was awestruck because it's very, it's one, it's very rare to see that group. And two, it's very rare to see that many of us in one group in Rancho Cordova talking about, they, you know, the whole thing, the OK Group, don't believe in drugs, don't believe in alcohol, do what's right, take care of your homework, talk to your parents. I was just, I was like, wow, what a great, what an amazing program. And they've tried to start it, but it's, it's difficult to start those kind of programs up. But I was like, we might be rare to start one of those up. But just to see that kind of program and the aftermath and how, like, all the guys are college graduates. All like lower disadvantaged youths that had came from the bottom, got to college, went and started their stuff and then came back. And it was funny because they're all flying back in because they're all spread out. And I, of course, guilted them and being like, it's funny that you guys got educated and helped by Rancho, but you don't come back and bring all that wealth home. I was like, it's time for you guys to all come. So who knows, the guilt trip might have worked. But it's, it did give, it was eye-opening and I just thought, thank you so much. Thank you to my planning commissioner that basically invited me because he's part of that OK Group. Because it's just so many, like tons of lawyers, like, that are all out of Rancho Cordova. And I was like, I mean, how many people realize that in the school? That lawyers, doctors, technologists all came out of Cordova High and have been going there and all because of this program kept them on the straight and narrow and then got them out of the school. So it was awesome. And congratulations to Folsom Lake College for their new alumni. And the coolest thing I went to because besides totally focusing on the family was watching the school, Revue STEM Academy as it expands. Just another feather in our cap. We took the K-6 and made it to K-8 and that is going to be an amazing, because it's already ranked number one. And it's funny because I talked to the old parents and they're like, well, I live in Folsom, but it's a hard drive, but I'm just willing to come down to Rancho Cordova to get my kid educated in math and science. I was like, yes, right. Rancho Cordova for math and sciences. That's what I like to hear. Because it's funny because they did that. Oh, congratulations to the San Juan Soccer Club. It's a nonprofit club that has Rancho Cordova big old logo. They won a bunch of Terminets. And I love watching people from Elk Grove, Folsom, Roseville with our logo on the front of them as we win. So just, I'd be able to shout out for that.
That's a nice twist.
Yeah, I like that. I was like, oh, look at that. It's our logo. That's all I have.
So I'm just going to annotate a little bit because Linda isn't here to do it. Or she's online. I was kind of, I'm surprised she didn't cut in. So the OK Program was Deputy Donald Norcross. It existed when we became a city, lost funding shortly thereafter. We became a city, wasn't, was not funded by us back then. We didn't really have the building to do that. But it was mainly for African-American male students at Cordoba High School, but also the middle schools. And I went to several of their meetings in the early 2000s. And the one, other than the great mentorship they were doing there, it was like Saturday morning at Mills and they'd be there for five or six hours. So they'd have to feed these kids. And so not only the great mentorship is something I remember and the way they interacted with the kids, but how many hot dogs the kids ate is something that just like popped into my mind. Like, I didn't realize then that these teenagers could consume like eight hot dogs. But you saw it sort of happening there. But they had great experiences. He brought a sheriff's department background to the program, got a lot of funding. And I think he moved off to somewhere in the Midwest to sort of start another group of OK Program.
So they're national now and they're, they have, he's now in Frisco. I met the gentleman that started it. It was the cop that worked with Coop and all that stuff. And now he's moved back into Rancho Cordova. And I was like, listen, hmm, might be time. Let's talk about it because he said it's really hard to get the police to line up. And I was like, well, that's all you really need. We can talk to somebody because that would be a great program to help out disadvantaged youth in the community. Just, wow, what a, and it's funny because what a legacy program that doesn't exist in Rancho anymore. Like, how many other?
Congressional.
Right, it's just great.
We're going to get a councilwoman, Budge, for her report.
There she is.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Garrett. You're absolutely right, David. I appreciate the fact that you remember his name. And the funny thing is, we were just talking about the building that they had occupied for a while over at, over on Zimphadell. And David, the other thing you talked about is the incredible attendance at Williamson. I will tell you, it's not that they're taking credit for it, but regional transit has statistics from so many of the school districts that the free rides for students program has not just increased the ridership on regional transit, light rail and buses, but it's also enhanced attendance at the schools because it's easier for kids to get to school because nobody has to drive them or, and they don't have to pay for the bus or the light rail. So, you know, it just, we all support each other. That's a really great thing. In terms of the school district, David and I had, and our city manager had a great meeting with Folsom Cordova. And I think there's a lot of positive things that will come out of that. Thank you, Garrett. I attended the first library meeting in quite some time. And our local resident, Pam Whiteley, is now the president of the Rancho Cordova Friends of the Library. Even though it's not in Rancho Cordova, Pam is. And, and there is, they run a book barn, which might still be located on right off Power Inn. And books are free for teachers who go in there. They can find all sorts of books and magazines and periodicals. I want to thank you all for enabling me to attend a high school reunion on the East Coast, which also involved watching Georgia beat Marshall dramatically. And tonight, I do, thank you, Siri, I do have a couple of people that we need to adjourn in the memory of, and I sent these names to Stacy earlier. One of them is Phil Niedaberger. He was a longtime member of Rancho Cordova Rotary, but he also was the general manager of one of the local water districts. And then Gene Andel. Gene was the longtime manager of the county's Parks Department in charge of the parkway. And then finally, I know this sounds kind of funny, but the donkey at the petting zoo died. Donkey's name was Cupcake. And I can't, the donkey was 29 years old. And I can't tell you how many generations of kids in the FFA programs at Cordova have taken care of the donkey over years. And so ultimately, when the petting zoo moves over to Sawborn, they'll need to find themselves a new donkey. Thank you.
Well, Phil will love being recognized with a donkey. Absolutely.
Well, it's as good as, it's as good as telling Kevin Johnson that he got a key to the city, just like the horse Bob. Whatever.
Thank you, council member. It's my turn. So being mayor means a packed calendar and I'm sure all of you can attest to that. So I'm not going to go through that entire proclamations and ribbon cuttings that I had to attend to in August. For some reason, it was packed. But I will highlight three things. One was the Skyrise Aviation, which is an aviation center that opened at the Mather Airport. I actually flew in a small plane over Rancho Cordova, so that was pretty cool. I think all of you guys, if you were ever thinking of learning to fly or wanting to fly, should check out Skyrise Aviation. The other one is the concerts that are happening in the park. I attended one on a really hot Friday. We're doing this series of events called Mayor in Motion, where I'm out there in the community and residents can come up and talk about how much they like the city or any concerns they have so we can start working on them. So kudos to the residents that came up and voiced their concerns on what issues that they're facing. And speaking of issues they're facing, it's always nice when residents bring these up and when we see what's happening out there in the community because we will go back and, you know, go to the drawing board and see what we can do on our end. And one such thing was mail theft. We keep, kept getting complaints over complaints about mailboxes, including mine, being stolen over and over again. And there was nothing much we could do because the police had their hands tied and we'd go to the postal office and it was, they couldn't do much. So as a city, we're working, we set up license plate readers, cameras throughout the city. And in conjunction with our real-time information center that the police have, we can now watch out for the cars that are driving in these high-traffic area where we're seeing mail thefts. So folks that think now that they can get away with theft or any other donuts in the park, we're now watching you, though we're not wanting to watch you. But if you do something wrong, Rancho Cordova will not let you go. And with that, I will pass it on to the city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Mostly feeling good about all the good conversation tonight and comments from council. Only to share just appreciation for, I was able to participate in the American Leadership Forum the last couple of weeks ago and gone into wilderness for six days as part of the program. So really, as part of that, want to share just my appreciation for the team for being available and ready to react to all the things that are happening. As you mentioned, a lot of activities and a lot of things. So really appreciate the team and the council for allowing me to participate in that program. So with that, back to you.
Mike, did, did you get any reports today about like a microburst sort of activity in Rancho Cordova? Huge gust of wind?
Yeah, so actually I did receive a call from Metro Fire Deputy Chief that not in Rancho Cordova, but a couple of other places regionally, but not, but there was activity in the area, but nothing specifically that I heard of today.
I was working in my office, heard a huge gust of wind. Had some sort of alert pop up on my phone that someone was saying it was a tornado. I grew up in the Midwest, not a tornado, just wind. But nonetheless, every loose needle and branch on all the trees in my yard got thrown into my pool. I mean, unbelievable amount. Like, my car was covered in needles and leaves. So I just wondered if, I noticed our parking lot here was also very leafy.
Definitely some weird weather activity today that, you know, made for some interesting responses, but nothing locally of any substantial.
Trees down and roads closed.
We did see some posts on social media.
Around, yeah. Some minor things that took place, but nothing significant.
Thank you. We move on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items council wishes to pull from consent calendar? Any public comment related to consent calendar?
I do not have any public comment for the consent calendar.
Is there a motion to move the consent calendar?
I'll go ahead and move consent calendar items. 16.1 through 16.8.
A roll call, council member Sander?
Aye.
Council member Little?
Yeah.
Council member Budge? Council member Budge?
She, Captain, can you unmute her?
I'm trying.
Button on the left.
She might have stepped away.
Okay.
Siri, pull a potty.
Yes.
So that'll be a 4-0 vote. Motion passes. Linda, council member Budge is absent.
Okay. We move on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Going to open for public hearing?
There is no public comment?
I am going to close public hearing. Any items that the council wishes to pull? Do I have?
Item 17.1.
Go ahead and second that.
Can I ask the city clerk for roll, please?
Council member Sander?
Aye.
Council member Little?
Yeah.
Council member Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yep.
Mayor, pull a potty.
Yes.
Thank you.
We move on to public hearing items and I will ask the city clerk to announce the subject.
Jackson Properties Warehouse Storage Building, major design review amendment and height exception, SEQA exempt pursuant to Section 15183, projects consistent with a community plan or zoning. Project number PLND 09240110.
I'd like to ask Nick Sosa for the staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Nick Sosa with the City Planning Department. Tonight, I'll be presenting the Jackson Properties Warehouse Design Review Amendment and Height Exception. So some background on the project. The project site is located within the Mather Field Special Planning Area, which references the 2003 Sacramento County Code and as its regulatory document. Within the Mather Field Special Planning Area, projects greater than 75,000 square feet are considered a designer view level two, which the city council is the appropriate approval authority, which is why it's here in front of you today. The original major designer view and height exception also came to city council for approval and was previously approved on September 5th, 2023, which is almost exactly two years ago. So tonight, the applicant is requesting an amendment to their original major designer view and height exception. The amendment includes reorienting the site, relocating the loading dock area to the rear of the building and updating the site plan to accommodate that change. Part of this relocation also involves an increase in the number of loading docks from the original approved nine below grade loading docks to a total of 18 below grade loading docks with six at-grade roll-up doors. The applicant is also requesting a new approval for a height exception to exceed the forty-foot height maximum by approximately three and a half feet. The original project was approved for an eight-foot height increase, so the current design would be a reduction of four and a half feet from the original approval. So shown here is the project location within the Mather Field Special Planning Area. The project fronts Peter A. McEwen Boulevard and is adjacent to Old Placerville Road. The site is surrounded by existing office-type uses, uh, predominantly occupied by the California Office of Emergency Services, or CALOES, with some additional office buildings to the west across Old Placerville Road. So for reference, this is the original site plan that was approved in twenty-twenty-three. I've highlighted some of the key changes to the overall site plan. The site plan shows the loading docks there in the front, which is in the green square. And it's fronting along Peter A. McEwen. And the screened by a three-foot landscape berm with a ten-foot masonry wall on top. So that's the red part. And also, the stormwater basin was located in the front of the building with the majority of the parking along the back area. So the new revised site plan would include, would, as you can see there in the green, the loading docks have been relocated to the rear of the building and would be screened by a twelve-foot ring wing wall, which is that red line there along the left, along the edge of the building, shown there in red. And the loading dock area would also be screened by significant landscaping along Old Placerville Road, which I'll show in the next slide. Other changes here are that the stormwater basin has also moved to the rear of the site. And the majority of the parking area is now located along the frontage on Peter A. McEwen, which is more consistent with uh, the adjacent property next door. Lastly, the building's square footage has also been reduced by approximately four thousand square feet. So these are images of the existing landscaping along Old Placerville Road. These are mature evergreen trees that do provide some dense screening along the public right-of-way, along that corridor. Um, these trees have been topped due to existing power lines there in that area. But still provide screening of the truck base that are proposed. Shown here is another image um, of the existing trees that screen the project. The yellow outline there is an outline of the proposed building at the line of sight from Old Placerville Road. One thing that is important to note is that all these existing trees are located on adjacent parcels and not in the property itself. So the applicant will also be providing their own landscaping internal to the site to ensure that the screening continues to be maintained uh, throughout the project. So shown here is the updated landscape plan. As you can see, there are internal trees aligned along the western property line there that maintain that dense screening. And these will be planted alongside those existing evergreen trees along Old Placerville. Additionally, a variety of trees and ground cover has also been provided along the north end of the property, as well as along Peter A. McEwen. Adding trees to meet lot, parking lot shape requirements out front. And also, there's a small yellow portion at the top left where trees would not be able to be accommodated due to spacing issues there. So they are including um, screening shrubs there to help maintain a level of screening even in that area. So shown here is the updated building elevations. The top is the original building elevation and the bottom is the new revised elevation. So the uh, elevation that would, this is the elevation that would be considered the rear of the property facing the large CALOES building behind the property. Um, with the location of the loading docks in the rear, this elevation now has eighteen below-grade loading docks along that north elevation uh, with four roll-up doors at grade level. And the focus of the building will now be along the south elevation, which is fronting Peter A. McEwen. So shown here is the south elevation, which is again showing, again, against Peter A. McEwen. Um, the project has removed the loading dock doors, which are shown there on the front on the original project, and increased the number of entrances along the front of the building. Um, entrances are highlighted by a darker border, um, as well as the roof parapet differentiations that create additional focal points along the front facade. And with the removal of the loading docks, additional windows and glass facades have also been added to be more consistent with surrounding office buildings. So shown here is the east and west elevation. Um, the east elevation on the left has gained an additional entrance for more roof articulation and storefront design. And the west elevation on the right um, has mostly remained the same. However, it does include now a new at-grade roll-up door as well as a twelve-foot screen wall for the loading dock area. These are updated renderings that were provided by the applicant. The top image shows the view from the back of the property looking towards Peter A. McEwen. You can see the loading docks on the right. And the bottom image shows a rendering from Peter A. McEwen looking at the frontage of the building. These are additional renderings. The top, again, is from the Peter A. McEwen viewpoint, looking at the frontage, and the bottom is from Old Placerville, that back corner of the property, looking towards Peter A. McEwen, again, with the loading docks there shown. So for the height exception, uh, the applicant is requesting to exceed the forty-foot maximum allowed by the commercial office park sub-area of the Mather Field Special Planning Area. They're requesting an increase of up to forty-three feet and four inches. The original project was approved for an eight-foot height increase as part of the original project. With the current semittal, the applicant has reduced the building height, but is still requesting to exceed that maximum forty. Um, most of these, most of that increase is for, to accommodate tower features and roof variations for the design of the building. Uh, per the Sacramento County Code, height exceptions may be granted for commercial and industrial buildings by the approval authority, provided that the buildings are set back from the public right-of-way a distance equal to the height of the building. So on this slide, you can see that the back corner, which is closest to Old Placerville, is a large distance away from, from Old Placerville at a hundred and thirty-one feet. And the frontage there along Peter A. McEwen is shown at ninety-three feet from the public right-of-way, which is much greater than the minimum that's required to meet the exception. For reference, these are some of the heights of the surrounding buildings for comparison. Across Old Placerville, you can see that they're about seventeen feet and down at the south, southwest, it's another seventeen foot. Um, some of the other office buildings there, they're owned by CALOES, are all about forty-two feet, thirty-seven feet. Um, the larger CALOES building, I was not able to find the height of that one, but it's a two-story office building, so it's most likely similar to the other CALOES buildings in the area. So for this updated site plan with the additional loading docks, the applicant did work closely with our Public Works team and did complete an initial traffic study for the updated project uh, to ensure that, as proposed, it's still consistent within the allowable trips. At the moment, the applicant does not have a designated tenant for the site, so the building has been reviewed as a warehouse, light industrial, manufacturing use category. Um, in the revised project, the number of loading docks has increased. However, the square footages have been reduced by four thousand square feet. The study that was provided and reviewed by staff does describe how loading docks, as a form of trip generation measurement, is a variable measurement. Uh, depending on the operation of the facility, the intended use of the dock areas and the type of loading and unloading taking place within the facility. So because there are a number of variables that can determine how often the loading docks do get used, they typically are not, they do not accurately correlate with the truck trips that are happening on-site. However, other forms of analysis were completed within the study, and overall, the project was still determined to be below one thousand trips per day and a hundred trips during peak hour, and no future traffic analysis was required for this. So to close out, the staff has determined that the project is exempt from further SEQA analysis pursuant to section one-five-one-eight-three, projects consistent with the community plan, general plan, or zoning. Um, this is based upon that the project has been reviewed and determined to be in conformity with what was reviewed as part of the certified EIR for the Mather Field Special Planning Area. With that, staff is recommending that the city council determine the project exempt per section one-five-one-eight-three and adopt the resolution for the Jackson Properties Major Designer View Amendment and Height Exception, um, subject to the findings, project plans, and conditions of approval uh, for the project. So that concludes my presentation, and staff, as well as the applicant, are available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Nick. I'd like to open it up for public comment.
Did you want to bang your cabal? Thank you. Uh, James Garcia, if you'd like to come forward?
Hello, James Garcia again, uh, resident Stone Creek. Um, I'm actually in support of this, you know? Yeah, hear me, warehouse man. I, I, I do, because it's in the right location. That's the problem, is with the other ones that we've had in the past. This one's actually where it should be. Um, it's gonna have the right um, screening away from the traffic of our actual residents. They're, they're miles away. So that's the beauty of it. We already had it approved for forty-eight feet. We're reducing it. Hey, what a concept. We actually are lowering things. So it's actually in the right spot. Obviously, it's gonna be a wishful build-it and someone will come, but we kind of need those, because the only other buildings that are on Mather are the hangers. So uh, at this point in time, we either tear down other stuff and we build it there, but that's not gonna be the most appropriate location. So for this, it's gonna probably be someone next to it, as long as um, those trucks can get in and out of there appropriately with the proper engineering and not cause problems, I think we're good. So that's, that's my take on it. Thanks.
That's all the public comment that we have for the public hearing, so you can close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing and ask council for any comments or questions? If not, I would like, go ahead, Linda. Yes.
I'm sorry. Siri, I just, I just have two comments. And um, the applicant has heard both of these from me. Uh, number one, if you've driven by the warehouse out by Rudy's, the new one, you will find that, for whatever reasons, they have put, I'm sorry, a dozen HVAC units on their roof without any uh, shielding. No parapets, no shielding, whatever. And um, I don't know how that happened. I don't know whether we approved it in the design review or what, but they stick out there like a sore thumb. And that's not the look that we want for Rancho Cordova. Whether it's a warehouse or whatever, we don't want to see those things. And, and if you go out by Rudy's, you'll see it. So we want to make sure, we need, um, we need staff to make sure that the parapets are high enough to shield all of their HVAC units. Secondly, um, the only thing I'm really concerned about is access. And James sort of alluded to it, but um, if this is warehousing, manufacturing, and light industrial, this is not logistics, and that's what the applicants have said. So there should not be a problem with their um, heavy trucks moving on and off-site, but do, from this particular location, do the, or does the truck traffic, whatever truck traffic there is, move either east to Mather Boulevard? Or does it move west out to McCready and out to Old Placerville Road and to Braggaw to the freeway? Ultimately, any truck traffic coming out of here has got to go to the freeway, we assume. So that would be my concern. What is the appropriate route? And I know that uh, Public Works must have looked at this, but I didn't see anything in the staff report on, um, in terms of transportation that might talk about that. So if Public Works could talk about that, or if the applicant could talk about that, that would be a great thing.
Is it Albert? Okay. Albert's coming up, Linda.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pulapati and members of the council. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. I would expect that the most direct route would be to Mather Field Road and the freeway. And um, but it would really, again, it would be, it would vary depending upon who the user is and their destination.
So um, I understand that. But Peter McEwen and Mather Field Road, well, Peter McEwen specifically is a two-lane road. And it goes by the, um, the Pottont Court and um, uh, Mather Park. And Mather Field Road, if the traffic is going, if, if the truck traffic is going in the morning or the evening, that's not probably, probably not a problem. But the majority of the traffic between the peak hours on Mather Field Road is veterans going to the VA. And so the question is, how does that really mesh with truck traffic?
I would say one input on that is that the, the volume of traffic is relatively low, so it's certainly an incremental addition to the traffic that's already out there, which can be heavy in certain, some places, and particularly at certain times. But the addition of traffic here is actually relatively low, especially compared to other potential uses.
Um, I understand it, and I, I, I understand and I agree. If it's warehousing and um, manufacturing and light industrial, should it become logistics? Then the picture would change.
Good, council member, and I think maybe the applicant can address this too, but um, when you talk about logistics, I would say that there is a certain building type and look and feel that it needs to be logistics. And a building like this doesn't typically provide for a logistics-type user. Now, it may feel like that, because there's some loading docks and different things, but um, I think the style of the building and the size of the building and the fact that it's multi-tenant does not lend itself to a logistics project. Now, it doesn't mean that somebody with some different amount of truck traffic will come in, depending on the user, um, to be determined, but I think it meets the standards as required based on the size of the building.
I understand, Micah. I'm just thinking about the unintended consequences. Number one, this building originally had a mezzanine, which it does not anymore. That facilitates high pile storage, which suggests logistics. But we, of course, and, and probably the applicant, has no idea what um, OES might use it for, even if they, uh, even if they do take the one-third of the building that the applicant hopes they will take.
I, I think you've hit on the challenge of spec building, a little bit of building buildings that don't have a particular user. You can't get into too many of the, the details of what the operation will look like. And that's kind of a little bit of the challenge of approving spec building, but those are allowed uses within this specific plan.
I understand. Thank you. Those were just my two concerns. Thank you, Siri.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I would just echo my colleague's comments and question. I think this is the appropriate place for this sort of use. I think it fits. I think it fits into the neighborhood. I have looked at the plan and tried to figure out if there's a way to make it look a little more office-like, but I think actually, having stood on the site, I think it's going to accomplish that, and it's going to be well-screened. So I'm in support.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, can I have the city clerk for roll, please?
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
The council member, Budge.
Yes. Anyway, you look at it, Jackson has built some wonderful buildings at Mather.
Council member Little.
Yep.
Council member Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Pulipati.
Yes. Thank you, and congratulations applicants. This is a kind of a, this is not a pattern for a warehouse. It's a one-and-done.
Thank you, Siri.
We go on to regular calendar items, and I'll ask the city clerk to please announce the subject.
Mills Crossing Project Discussion.
As for Stefan and Christine for the staff report.
Good evening, mayor, council, members of the public. My name's Christine Cordy, and Stefan and I are here to discuss the Mills Crossing Project Implementation scenarios. In addition, we have our consultant team, Corinne Crawford from Griffin Swinerton, and Nick Wilder from Related here, if there are any questions during our question and To get started, the Mills Crossing Project was recently entitled this summer, and it included approved map, zone change, and environmental impact report. We've completed a design development update for the entitlement site, and the city has two grants that have deadlines coming up at the end of 2026, around $9 million for site work and $7 million behavioral grant for Building One. So we would like further project direction so that we can meet these grant funding deadlines. As a reminder, there are no financial commitments being made with this agenda item, and we're just seeking project direction. So as I mentioned, tonight, we're looking to present these project scenarios, and they're ranging from full build-out of an entitled project, buildings portions of the project, or deferring the project to a future time. So we are looking to receive council feedback on these implementation scenarios, and we will present some next steps with each of the scenarios that we're going to go over So here's an overview of the four scenarios that I will be going into tonight, ranging, like I said, from full build-out of the $120 million entitled project to deferring the project at a future time. So Scenario One is the full build-out of the entitled project that was presented this summer, which includes three buildings, so Building One and up to 36,000 square-foot medical building, Building Two, a 25,000 square-foot art center, and Building Three, a 10,000 square-foot event space. And this also includes all associated site work, grading, and utilities. And this project alternative would utilize all the $16 million in grant funding. And here's just a bird's-eye-view reminder of the project looking from Folsom Boulevard. So with this, Building One is proposed as up to a 36,000 square-foot community health building. This building is $31 million and is eligible for the $7 million behavioral health grant. And the proposed programming includes outpatient care facilities, including primary care and integrated licensed clinical social workers to meet patients' behavioral health needs. Scenario Two is very similar to Scenario One, except this eliminates Building Three. This $105 million project would utilize all the $16 million in grant funds as well. So Scenarios One and Two have very similar next steps. So the next steps in the process would, we would need to do a PDA amendment with our existing project development agreement later this year, and then we would start the guaranteed maximum price process and finalize the project agreement for the implementation of a selected alternative. So I'm going to turn it over to Stefan to go over a couple more scenarios and then reveal four questions.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the city. Again, as Christine just mentioned, I'll go over Scenarios Three and Four, and then we'll end on council discussion. So the third scenario here would be a reduced project build-out. It would look to utilize just the infrastructure grants received, about $9 million, creating a project of about $9 to $10 million, only for site infrastructure. So this project scenario would build out the roadway network on the site. It would grade the site and install underground utilities sort of where appropriate and feasible, utilizing those infrastructure grant funds. It would create the parcels as entitled, which include two parcels for housing and a middle parcel for potential future open space or another use. It would not, this scenario would not include construction of community facilities, a plaza, Project Green, or any parking. There's some key considerations with the Scenario Three that should be considered. So this, again, would be focusing on expending the infrastructure grant funds that we have received that have an expenditure deadline of December 31, 2026. And that funding, it should be noted, is also sort of tied with the intent of that program was to accelerate or create sort of additional housing uses on transit-oriented locations. So if we were to move forward with that, utilizing those grants, we would still sort of have somewhat of a grant expectation of creating those additional housing units at some point. This scenario would also utilize the utility layout and site parcel layout as currently entitled to the project, so there would be sort of no additional consideration for changes unless so directed by council this evening. And then also, we would sort of look to some future next steps to revision, either the commercial, the housing, or, you know, any or all of the parcels created with this scenario. So that could include restarting a sort of a public use visioning process of potential other public uses for the site. We could also just sort of consider reserving the parcels for future private commercial development to come the city's way, which we would then sort of consider with council when those proposals may be received. Or another option could be to pivot a little bit more towards additional housing uses for the site, so we could engage in some more visioning as to what that might look like. Important to note with this scenario and the next one is we will likely have to include a surplus land act process with that revisioning process. So I just want to kind of put that into your minds, that we may need to go through an additional sort of six-to-nine-month process before the city could lease or sell the land to any private developers. The timeline for Scenario Three, so late 2025, we would consider an amendment to our existing pre-development agreement with Griffin Swinerton to sort of continue through the final design phases for the infrastructure components. We would also work with permitting and utility coordination, as well as continue looking at housing coordination for the housing parcels. In early 2026, we would look to execute project agreements and a guaranteed maximum price in order to execute and groundbreak on those infrastructure improvements to meet our grand expenditure deadline. And then also, as an option, but could be sort of depending on interest or timing, we could restart the revisioning for the site. And then in summer 2026, we would expect for site work groundbreaking. Scenario Four is sort of the no-project scenario. We would sort of put the project on pause. We have a fully entitled project. We do have a certified environmental impact report, and we are currently continuing to completion the soil remediation of the site. So we have some definitely accomplishments that make this site a lot more development-ready, and as well as a completed design development. So in this scenario, we would also be looking to forfeit the grants that have been received. So the next steps with this scenario would be updating the granting agencies on our decision sort of not to move forward. We would look to have some future conversations with council as to direction on the project funding that has been committed to Mills Crossing currently, but may not be needed in the short term or long term. And then also, we would look to sort of maybe schedule the right time to do some revisioning for the site as to how to use this city-owned site. And again, just to kind of put it into the picture, also probably including some surplus land act process as well. So wrapping up here, looking for council discussion again on the four scenarios. Scenario One being the full project build-out, Scenario Two being a reduced build-out of just Buildings One and Two, Scenario Three focusing only on site work build-out, and then Scenario Four kind of leaving the site entitled for a future project. And then we're requesting direction from council for next steps. That concludes our presentations, and happy to take any questions and comments.
Thank you, Stefan. First, I'd like to see if we have any public comment.
We do. We have two speakers, James Garcia, if you'd like to come forward, and following James will be Helen Waylon-Bishaw. You'll have up to three minutes.
Okay, great. James Garcia again, Stone Creek. I'm actually for Option Four, pausing the whole entire thing. As many times we've already spoken, we don't have the garage. It's a money pit. We never have been given a financial feasibility study by any organizations that's going to utilize this space. Very, very limited number of parking. Outside restrooms is not going to be there. Outside power was going to be very, very limited. Trash cans, again, everything was all limited. We've already spent an awful lot of money on this, but at this point in time, I would rather see that money gone than have to spend another $120 million, or $105 million, or even just use the grant money, and then we're stuck in that design. There's an awful lot of developers that want to develop things. This could be one. We could change the whole design appropriately. Housing was always going to be a problem with it for all the existing residents that are there. They're now going to be looking at people that had two-story looking over their fence on the north edge of the building, or even on the other side streets. So it just does not make sense to move forward because it is a money pit. There really is not going to be a strong impact to be able to do that. We already have a potential for the medical. Great, let them build it themselves. Sutter can come in and build that, because that building is entitled, so you could opt to go that route down the road, allow them to build that building. But the whole project as a whole, put it on pause. Thank you.
Next speaker, Helen.
Helen Waylon-Bishaw again. I agree with James Garcia. You don't build a street of dreams and hope people are going to come in. Option Four is the only way to go. Put it on hold, because right now, we have a lot of areas on Folsom Boulevard that need to be addressed. You're making assumptions that these things will go, like Scenario One is crazy, you don't build it out with infrastructure, because what happens if that infrastructure is wrong? Then the new company coming in is going to want the city to fund removal of the infrastructure. I suggest leave it as is, because parking is an issue in that area. Any of those scenarios that you pick, you're not helping the people who currently live in that area, because parking is difficult. You're bringing the driveways out on burdened streets, not on Folsom Boulevard. When this project about a year ago was talked, I suggested a compromise. And the compromise with the builder was giving us a parking structure, because there's multiuses you can do with the upper floor of a parking structure. You can't say people who are going to live there are going to use light rail. Light rail does not, is not the answer for a lot of people, because it doesn't, if you're going to a job downtown, yeah, maybe, but it doesn't give the average person what they need. You're still going to have a car community. I just think we need to let it sit. It's been sitting this long. Let it sit. It's no sense in putting in any amount of money. It's a money pit. Some of the projects that have been suggested to me are not necessarily what that community needs. Parking has been a major issue. Noise for the adjoining neighborhoods has been a major issue. Sure, you've got the college there, and you're saying that certain activities, people can park on the college parking lot or the parking lot up the street where the shopping center is. People come to events and don't like to walk, unless they go downtown. But normally, it's not that far to go. That neighborhood, in my opinion, can not necessarily be an encouraging place for people who want to come at night to an event. I just think we need to put it on the back burner for now. Thank you.
Mayor Pulipati, that's all the public comment that we have.
I'm going to pass it on for council for comments, questions.
Here, I'll do the first one. So I just think we need to put it on pause. I'm one of those people that's like, it's time for this project. It kind of got legs on us, went and doubled in price, and I just don't feel comfortable spending that kind of money on this project as it is right now. I think it's worth us really getting excited. When we first started, we were super excited, and now I don't feel like we have that same kind of energy towards this. I don't think we should wedge ourselves in. I'm okay with giving back grants, because we're not going to use it for what we want, and maybe we want to do something different. And honestly, we said we wanted to entitle the project, get it prepped, and if someone else wants to come into the city, we're going to have a piece of land. And I think down the way, we'll find the right person, or it'll be a right private-public partnership, but I just think at this time, spending 120, 250, and emptying the couch just doesn't make the most amount of sense. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Council member Sander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know how long we've been working on this project. I was trying to recall, I think it's probably eight to 10 years, something in that timeframe. We had some history trying to acquire the property. I won't go over that again, but obviously, there were ups and downs, and a hard, unexpected turn that finally got it into our hands. The goal from day one was to stimulate Folsom Boulevard. I mean, literally, from the day we incorporated as a city, one of our challenges has been, how do you fix Folsom Boulevard? Because for most people who live, certainly on the north side of the city, which is vast majority of the population, Folsom Boulevard is like Main Street. When we became a city, it was ugly. There were no trees, there was no median, it was a whole bunch of pavement, a whole bunch of power lines, a whole bunch of broken buildings, broken pavement, bad crossings. I think probably the most impactful thing we have done as a city in terms of impacting our residents is the remodel of Folsom Boulevard, and turning it from a horrible-looking old US 50 into something that people could be proud of who lived in Rancho Cordova, that they had this attractive boulevard near their home. But the second part of what we hope to accomplish with remodeling Folsom has not happened. The theory was that if you, on an old commercial corridor like Folsom Boulevard, if you invest enough in the infrastructure to make it look attractive and safe and new and a little more modern, that private sector business would come along and invest. And in 20 years of working on Folsom Boulevard, after the expenditure probably of $60 or $70 million of federal and state funds, mainly not ours, but some of ours, in improving that boulevard, the only private sector development we had, other than tearing down hotels, which I think we ended up mostly paying for, was the development of a drugstore at the intersection of Zinfandel and Folsom. And that was only because there was a war going on between two major chains of drugstores, right? Drugstore's not there anymore, because one side won that war and the marketplace changed. But if you think about how much private investment has occurred along the boulevard, that's just about it. I mean, there have been remodels, but not significant ones that would say, tear something down, build a brand-new building. That really hasn't happened, with the exception of that one drugstore. Public sector investment has happened. The college located there, probably because we were undertaking this, we talked them into it. But as of now, their plan is not to expand that site, as I understand it. Correct me if I'm wrong. They have plans for a Phase Two and a Phase Three, but they have no short-term, multi-year goal of actually doing that. It seems to be shelved. So I think our goal is the same. We have to reinvent Folsom Boulevard. The shame of it is that this project did not get us there. I think our prime directive for it was, make a project that will stimulate other growth along Folsom Boulevard. And we thought the tools necessary to do that would be housing, but also some kind of an attractor, something that would bring people to a site from elsewhere and create a little vibe or a little energy that would make Folsom Boulevard attractive. So then you've got people coming from the outside, and you've got people living there. The people who live there are probably going to spend more than developers or real estate people would think they would in that sort of a scenario. And we've seen that before. When we put an apartment complex in the middle of a business park, people people said we were crazy, but the developer from Stockton at the time knew what he was doing. We have an extraordinarily successful apartment complex there, surrounded by 5,000 jobs, literally, on its periphery, and getting rents that no real estate model ever projected. Because we've had developers in here saying, you're lying about the rent numbers. So real estate investors can be wrong about this. So the point of this project was to stimulate that and prove that you can do something on Folsom Boulevard, and most real estate developers aren't going to touch it, because infill is so darn hard. So it's a chicken-and-egg problem, right? If, if we don't subsidize a private development, we probably don't get it. The sort of development we probably can get, like this, is affordable housing. That may not be what the majority of people in Rancho Cordova would like to see happen along the boulevard. And it's not clear that achieves a change in the appearance of Folsom Boulevard over time, just by itself. I think we still need that attractor. The fact that there were services proposed here was also a bonus. You know, having a clinic available there with a variety of services and, you know, a good partner. I think if we had a partner who was willing to go big on that site, like a three-story building, we could probably talk about a modification of, of one of these plans, where that would get built. And we would put in some infrastructure, because we'd be getting something for it. But right now, it looks like we're getting a tiny little investment in a small building on a place that should have a more urban feel. I've heard comments about, you know, the neighborhood, the neighborhood. I think the most important thing for this neighborhood, the ultimate help we can give the neighborhood that's around there, is to create something that has a vibrant future, you know? Fast food here would be a disaster. Just doing all affordable housing, disaster. This is the site, when economic development consultants have come to Rancho Cordova over the past 25 years, this is the intersection they point to as the ripest, the best, the most likely to be privately developed, is this intersection. And that means it's going to most likely be a dense use, three-story buildings, not auto-dependent. People can get there by bike, they can walk, they can live there in pretty great density. That's what makes these kind of places work elsewhere. We can see in our region, we can see in other cities we've visited. And it's extremely frustrating to have not ended up with a project where we can, where we can do that, or at least not at a price we're willing to, to pay. Even if we invested 120, I'm not convinced, for example, the theater would function in a strong enough manner to actually be that vibrant center of this development. That, that's heartbreaking to me. I think we just haven't, we haven't seen an arts partner step up who has a lot of, not necessarily resource, because that's where we could help, but a lot of energy and interest in partnering us, with us to do that there. So maybe this was just too big of a step. Maybe we need smaller steps in Rancho Cordova to demonstrate success. The risk we've got right now, as I see it, is the surplus land act. Because I don't, and I'm no expert on this, but the fear is that if the city is holding land that's not being developed, a state agency can take over our planning role and start permitting things to be built, and I'm, I'm sure I'm butchering this, but I think the, the theme and the core of it is correct, with no local input whatsoever. And we could end up with whatever some state bureaucrat chose to decide was a good idea there, under the surplus land act. That is a very scary thing. That would not benefit the neighborhood. That would not cause a spark in Folsom Boulevard, and it would be inconsistent with our history and intent. So I worry about that. But I don't think I can, I can vote for spending literally 20 years of savings by the city on a project that may not actually spark what we intended to spark.
Thank you. Councillor Member Budge.
Siri, let's hear what Joe has to say.
I feel special. I'm with either three or four. Even when the project's champions are saying it's too expensive, you know, that's proof's in the pudding. The healthcare grant, that was supposed to be for our poor folk who live in a healthcare desert, and now the only taker is a healthcare system that poor people don't belong to. So I have no problem getting rid of that grant, because it's not doing what we need it to do. I am hesitant about option four, in the sense that it seems like it prevents anything from happening with, with the site for a long time. Kind of just kicks the can down the road. I like scenario three, where we do site work. We explore more housing uses, because that's probably the only thing we can get built there in a way that works for us. So for me, it's either three or four.
Thank you, Councillor Member Little. Councillor Member Budge.
Okay, so there's no question that we have all, past and present, looked to this site to truly remodel Folsom Boulevard. But the, but the, the challenge is, we've only got nine acres, guys. And this is not the kind of site that a larger developer, like people from the Denver area or whatever, would come in and work on, because it just offers all these incredible opportunities. And we wanted it to. Believe me, all of us wanted it to. I'm just wondering, and I hate to give up grants, but believe me, anybody who wants to give us money is a good idea. But I'm just wondering if we've sort of got the cart before the horse. We've always talked about what we could build on the boulevard. And then, oh, by the way, the housing would support, it would fund whatever we built on the boulevard. So what if we turned this whole thing over? And we facilitate building the housing at the rear of the site? And yeah, everybody's right. It's going to be taller than the, than the, than the apartments on Lolloma or Brevado or whatever. But that's just the terrain that we're dealt with. You know, you go down into the meadows, you go down into the floodplain from Folsom Boulevard. That's just the way we're built. And it's really funny, because it's the only area that Rancho Cordova has that's not at its boulevard. But what if we built, focused on building the housing first? And then perhaps other people would come to build stuff on the front of the boulevard. I just think it's worth talking about. And we haven't talked about that yet as a scenario. And other than that, I truly believe we need to put the project on hold.
Thank you, Councillor Member Budge. Do we have a motion?
Just, isn't what she just said sort of scenario three?
Yeah, that was probably the kind of the conversation.
I'm not sure. I think Councillor Member Budge said she doesn't want to let go of any money, but she's willing to let that go. So, Councillor Member Budge, were you three or four?
I would support scenario three, so that we built out site work for housing.
Okay. I, I would add comments to this, but I think my comments are rolled into everybody else's, given the fact that we all want to revitalize Folsom Boulevard. That is the key for this project. I would personally prefer scenario one, that would bring people to our city. If we build it, they will come. But at this time, that doesn't seem to be an option, given that we've started this 10 years ago, and we've had everybody from youth council to community meetings to a lot of workshops to get where we are. We keep losing out on things by waiting, and conditions change, you know, it's gone way beyond budget. So I, I think we have a motion that we could go. Is anybody willing to make a motion?
David, Joe, you want to do three? Just we build it out and use those grants?
I think so, or table for a future discussion between three or four. Thank you for turning that on.
And I think we actually need to, you know, we should not just, I think table means just table it, but bring it back. Like, let's start working on it right away. It's not-
We wasted too much time already.
Right. So let's bring this back and go, and, and revision this a little quicker on our end, because there's no reason to, to spend 10 years working on this when we know what the community wants.
I think we need to be informed by the-
One of the things, one of the things we need to acknowledge is that we have always needed to upgrade the site work on this site. The storm drain, I mean, obviously roads, but the storm drain, water supply, all that underground stuff is really important here, and it needs to be solved.
And we, we got a grant for it anyways. What do you, how does that hold our, like, does it make it, so we have to, or we have to rip up everything? Is it a good idea to do this, if we're going to change how the, the housing product or anything like that on it? Would it make sense to do this, or is this just pigeonholing us into, it has to be, look like this now?
Garrett, there's nothing on there. We can, it's, it's a prime time to rip it up.
Oh, you just heard prime time, Linda.
I think you can draw lines on it and say, we think this is here, and this is here, and you have some entitlements already there.
I'm all about using the free money to fix up the area so it has drainage and stuff like that. That makes sense to me.
It helps us to act a little bit more like a developer who owns the property, and is looking for a partner.
Absolutely.
Okay. So do we have a motion for scenario three?
I'll move a motion for scenario three, $10 million site work.
I think I'd, I'd like to have staff come back and talk us about, talk to us about the risks, surplus land act, et cetera. Unless there's any comments they want to make now, I would also like to talk about what that next step might be. You know, who would we continue with? How would we continue to have discussions and look for, for partners? I think we'd be having a very different discussion. For example, if we had a healthcare provider who said, yeah, I want to build, I don't remember the size of the building. Is it 10,000 on each floor?
Yeah, 10,000 square feet, yeah.
13,000 on each floor? You know, if someone was willing to go three stories just with that investment right now, we'd probably be having a very different discussion. We'd probably be saying, let's do that, and then, you know, see what would happen elsewhere. But right now, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like either.
Yeah, and, and I think the healthcare provider is out there, and they are looking to come to our, we're 100 and, almost 100,000 people that need something. The closest hospital is over 45 minutes away.
So maybe time could help us find that sort of a partner.
All right, I'll stop in Garrett's motion, but Garrett, with the caution that there's stuff that went on before incorporation that made Rancho Cordova a magnet for a variety of things that it didn't want. And I'm sorry, that was a long time ago, but we need to be cognizant of that.
Yes, staff has asked if the label Civic Center, early on in this project, was a problem.
Yeah, take that off.
And I think so. I think that, that set us on a painful path, painful course, where the public was looking for a bowling alley and a dog park and a library, and none of that actually penciled at the site. We couldn't make that work. And so it's just a very difficult evolution.
It's been tough, David, because we've only got nine acres. And that just is not substantial enough to support a lot.
Okay. So it looks like we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes. Councillor Member Budge?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yep.
Councillor Member Sanders?
Aye.
Councillor Member Little?
Yes.
Mayor Pulapati?
Yes.
Thank you.
We move on to subject 19.2, and I'll ask the city clerk to announce the subject.
19.2, a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of improvement area number three of the city of Rancho Cordova, the Ranch Community Facilities District number 2021-1, approving and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, approving the form of preliminary official statement, approving sale of such bonds, and approving other related documents and actions.
Okay. I'll call on Michelle for the staff report, and after that, if the city clerk can ask for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Michelle Menge, Finance Manager. That item before you this evening is a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds on behalf of the Ranch CFD or Community Facilities District 2021-1 for improvement area number three. The CFD was formed in 2021 for the purpose of funding infrastructure and infrastructure-related impact fees for the ranch project. The financing-related resolution before you this evening approves the sale of bonds in an amount, in an amount not to exceed $15 million. These are special tax bonds, and they are secured solely by the special taxes collected within the CFD boundaries of improvement area number three. Staff would like to mention to the council that there was an error in the resolution that was included in the packet. It referenced improvement area number two, when it should have referenced improvement area number three. The correct reference was made throughout the documents, so it is just typographical. And staff's recommendation is adopting of the resolution with a corrections. And with that, I will open it up to any questions that the city council may have.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
All right. Guys, looking for a motion? Or any, I'm sorry, any public comment? Nothing on the, the grants and the bonds and the sales? Excellent. Motion, please. That was the first, and the first was David, second was Linda.
Siri, your voice has changed.
So good, so deep now. Frody. Roll call, please.
Councillor Member Sanders?
Aye.
Councillor Member Budge?
Yes.
Councillor Member Little?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Mayor Pulapati?
Yes. Okay. We move on to subject 19.3, and I'll ask the city clerk to please announce the subject.
That's our satisfaction thing.
Presentation of the 2025 Resident Satisfaction Survey Results.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Maria Chacon-Nisted with the Communications and Public Affairs Department. We're here this evening to present the findings of our biannual survey. As you'll recall, every other year, we survey our residents on how satisfied they are with city services and other items. And I'm here this evening with Stefan Heisler, our housing manager, and Dr. Dennis Tutilian, who are going to dive into the details and present this for you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Stefan Heisler. No relation to that other Stefan Heisler you just saw moments ago. Really just here to present the Satisfaction Survey results that we do every couple of years, along with Dr. Tutilian, who we worked with very well for a number of years now. And I'll leave most of the, the good news presentation sharing to him, but I just want to just go over just very briefly, sort of what, what the survey covers and some of the parameters that you've, you've seen before. It's all fairly familiar and doesn't change very greatly. So, I mean, in particular, the survey seeks to capture sort of the overall perceptions of living in Rancho Cordova, residents' satisfaction with the services that are offered by the city, satisfaction with customer service when residents are contacting the city, public safety perceptions, and the services provided by our police department, satisfaction with information provided by the city on its programs and services, and trying to understand how folks and residents are gathering information about the city. What sources of information do they use to learn about city programs and services? So overall, the survey hasn't changed in the last couple of years. Still, looking at a sample size of 350 residents over the age of 18, reaching them by phone, both landlines and cellphones. In the last six surveys, I myself haven't been lucky enough to be called yet, but I'm sure I will get there one day. These surveys were conducted in May of this year. We try to be kind of cognizant about some things that may be going on that would have an outside influence on responses. This year was a little bit easier. I think it was sort of quieter, and May, May was a good time period. And then, sort of in this presentation- Um, and then sort of in this presentation, you'll see that all comparisons are to the surveys that were completed in, uh, the last three cycles.
Well, first of all, first of all, I'd like to, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council for giving me the opportunity to, uh, conduct the study again for you. And I'd like to also thank Mike, Maria and Stefan for all the help they gave, a lot of insights, uh, in in preparation for the study. Excuse me. What I'd like to do first is just kind of give you a quick overview of what we found and then I can go into some of the detail, uh, quickly and some of the the key highlights. Uh, overall, uh, there's a very high level of satisfaction, uh, among residents for living in Rancho Cordova, a high level of satisfaction with the services that are being offered. Um, high level of satisfaction for the customer service that they're receiving. The, generally, the residents feel safe, although there's always room for improvement on that, but but the vast majority feel safe in the venues that we identified. Uh, considerably high satisfaction for the work of the, um, Rancho Cordova Police Department. High level of satisfaction also with the information that they receive. Um, I think what's, um, what I'll be able to show you here is from 2021 to 2023, there were some rather significant, significant differences. Um, these improvements in particular, and these in fact have sustained themselves in 2025. So with that in mind, I'd like to start, uh, just quickly, uh, the respondents to the survey. As you can see, um, the the gen, the breakdown between female and male respondents has stayed pretty consistent over the last, uh, three, uh, studies we've done. Good 50-50 split. Uh, the ages, uh, we've had a few more in the 65 and older in 2025. A few fewer in the under 40 compared to 23, uh, however, more than in 2021. Income, uh, as you can see, the above 100,000 has grown steadily. And the, uh, the the percentage who have less than 50, 50,000 or less in household income has declined slightly from 21 to 23 to 25. These three generally are pretty consistent over the three year, over the three, uh, studies we've done. And and the reason I'm, I want to point that out is because any findings we have would not be because we found a very different, uh, respondent group this time compared to other times. In terms of, um, uh, homeownership versus renters, uh, you can see that there has been an increase in the percent of renters, especially going from 2018 to 2021 and then basically slightly going up in 23 and 25. The number of years, uh, the residents have lived in Rancho Cordova, uh, less than five years or less has grown steadily. Um, and and the 2023, 2025 are quite consistent. Uh, in terms of ethnicity, uh, in 2021, 18 and 21, we had a considerably higher number of Caucasian respondents. We have a more diverse group in 2023 and 2025. And that's good news that we can get that kind of diversity in our respondents. Uh, so going into the issues of the study, um, we asked residents, uh, if they agreed or disagreed with the statement that they could have a good quality of life living in Rancho Cordova. Um, 88% said that they strongly agreed or agreed with that. Uh, this compares to basically the same in 2023, which was 90%. And those are improvements over 2021, which was 84%. I'd probably draw your attention mostly to the strongly disagree and this and disagree and strongly disagree. Only 3% of the respondents disagreed with that statement this time, and it's always been consistently low. Uh, that's the good news. Um, we asked them if they felt that the image of Rancho Cordova has gotten better or worse in or remain the same in the last two years. Um, we've seen an increase in getting gotten better, uh, from 2023 to 2025. It's now 52% versus 45. There was a drop in 2023, as you can see. Remain the same, um, uh, was the big one in 2023. Again, I draw your attention to gotten worse. This is pretty much held, uh, the same. I would like to mention, though, with the remain the same, one of the things about this is that if if respondents felt that the image of Rancho Cordova was very good, then getting better becomes harder and harder to get. So it's harder to increasingly get better. And so when I look at this, I look at the fact that we've got about 89% who have indicated that the image has either remained the same or gotten better. Um, and I think that's a strong, that's a strong, uh, statement and relatively few feel that the image has gotten worse. Among those who said that the image has gotten better, that was, um, the number of, the number, uh, here was 150 people or 180 people who said that. The main reason, the one main reason they said it was better was because of the streets and infrastructure. That was 28%. Um, then attracting quality businesses and city growth were 17 and 16% respectively. Those three were the the top, top number, or tops comments, um, in 2018. And the the quality of businesses and city growth was the top reason in 2021. The other category contained a lot of things that were relatively small numbers, such as, uh, beautification was 5%. Diversity was 3%. Um, not too much traffic was 3% and the cost of living was 3%. So that's, that accounted for 22%, but that was a big conglomeration of a bunch of relatively small responses. The, uh, among the people who said that the, um, image has gotten worse, and again, that was a grand total of 40 people out of 350 in the sample. Uh, the main reasons were the higher crime rate, homeless issues, lack of police services. But of that, the the big one was homeless, the homeless issue. That accounted for 38% of the, um, of the reasons why they felt the image has gotten worse. Uh, crime was 17%. That's only seven people. And the lack of police services was 10%. That's only four people. Okay? The big one in in this was certainly the homeless. Um, and 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 again, we're still dealing with a very small number of people here. We asked, uh, the respondents to rate, uh, how how good they felt the services, uh, 10 services were that were offered by the city. Uh, they were asked to rate them on a liquor type scale ranging from very good down to very poor. Uh, as, as you can see, repairing surf, repairing and servicing streets, 68% rated it as very good uh, or good, um, 10% rated it as poor, very poor. Um, the the percent, the poor, very poor has gone up slightly. The percent that rated it very good, good has gone down a little bit. That's just the way it is. Maintaining the streets, um, including cleanliness, lighting and landscaping, uh, is held pretty steady in the high 70% uh, in very good and good. And the poor, very poor, 5 to 7% fairly, very small. We asked a new question here in terms of trash disposal and recycling. They would rate that. 82% gave it a very good or good rating and only 4% gave it a poor, very poor rating, very strong on that one. One of the higher points also was the planning. We asked, uh, the respondents, uh, to rate it on how the the planning is done by the city for the future. Uh, I think the thing I want to point out here is in 2023 and 2025, uh, 69 to 70% rated it very good to good versus in 2021, only 51% rated it very good and good. And then if you go down to the poor, very poor, uh, that trend is is promising also. Only 5% rated the city's efforts in planning as poor, very poor, where it was at 14% back in 2021. Attracting and retaining businesses within the city, much the same kind of, of response, uh, response as what I just mentioned for the planning. Um, you can see that it has gone down a little bit. It has gone down some in, uh, 2025 in terms of the good, very good and good. Poor, very poor has been in the 6 to 9% range. Enforcing, uh, city codes, uh, very similar to what I just mentioned on this one. It's gone down a little bit in 2025 in terms of the positive ratings. Um, and the the poor, very poor has kind of held in that 9 to 10% range. We asked a new question, uh, concerning community events. And, uh, this one, again, 79% as you can see, rated very good or good, only 4% rated poor, very poor. We also asked about beautification programs, 67%. This was new also. 67% rated very good, 6% rated it as, uh, poor, very poor. I'm going to skip homelessness for one second, go down to the next one, providing police services in your neighborhood. Um, this one, you can see the trend has gone more positive, uh, with going from 66% giving a good rating in 2021 to 75% in 2025. The poor, very poor stayed in that 7, 8% level. The last one is addressing homeless. This, this is the only one out of the 10 that did not get a favorable rating by over 57% of the people. Uh, the very good and good was 31% rating. The poor, very poor was 37%. Um, this has, there hasn't been a huge improvement, uh, over the, um, the three studies that we've done. That that's still a major issue and I realize that's a very difficult issue, um, to deal with. So those were the city services. Then we asked, uh, respondents to rate their satisfaction with, uh, the, uh, customer service that they received, um, in person and by telephone. Um, this, as you can see, uh, 81% rated it, uh, very good or very, they were very satisfied or somewhat satisfied. Um, and that's pretty much, that's pretty similar to what we had in 2023. In 2021, we did not break out person, the person in telephone with online, and I'll get to the online next. So we, there was no comparisons we could make there. Um, the, uh, I think it's important to note that only that, not only, 42% of the respondents said they did contact the city either with questions or concerns, uh, in 2025. They did contact them in person or by telephone, um, in 2025. In 2023, it was 46% uh, that made contact this way. And I'll come back to that number in just a second. But again, you can see the dissatisfaction levels are are very low. We asked, uh, the same question about their their satisfaction with using the city's website and RC online. Um, this, you could see 82% were very satisfied or sad, somewhat satisfied. Uh, this is an improvement over 2023 when 78% um, said they were satisfied or very satisfied. Um, in terms of the dissatisfied and very dissatisfied, you could see that in 2023, it was 15%. That dropped to 6%. So the bottom line of this is the people have become much more satisfied with the on, online website, uh, services, much more satisfied with it. Um, in 2025, 39% of the respondents indicated that they had used this approach to contacting the city. Um, in 2023, that percent was 33. So the percent using this type of an approach to contact the city has gone up. In-person telephone has gone down. Satisfaction levels with the the website and online has improved considerably. So whoever's doing that has done a pretty nice job with putting that together, those packages together. We asked a new question about how respondents would rate the city's efforts to achieve its mission or vision statement. And we cited the mission, vision statement. This one, uh, is a little bit perplexing because we only had 13% who said very satisfied. And I must tell you, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me because they were very satisfied with all the services. They were very satisfied with the, you know, in terms of satisfied with the customer service they received, which all would go into many of the attributes of achieving the the mission or vision. Um, but you, I mean, you still have 69% who are very or somewhat satisfied and virtually nobody was dissatisfied. A lot of neither. They were no opinion. And my guess is this, these, the people really didn't understand, um, the mission. Uh, they probably weren't aware of it. And, uh, so I I think going into the future, if this question is asked, it probably needs to be retooled somewhat because I don't think we really got a great response. These responses don't make sense to me, given everything else. We asked respondents how safe they felt in different situations. We used five situations. Um, I can tell you that 75% or more of the respondents felt very safe or somewhat safe in each of the five. Um, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't love to have that 100%, but nevertheless, it's still a very high level of safety. And and again, I'm not discounting the fact that some don't feel safe. That that is an important issue. Uh, when they're alone, you can see that the trend has gone up in terms of somewhat are very, they felt somewhat are very safe. It's 85%. Um, in 2025, um, and that's gone up from 77% in 2021. Um, the somewhat are very unsafe is held pretty steady, gone down slightly. That that's not a lot of difference in numbers. It's still holding at a 10, 11, 12%. In your neighborhood, uh, this one has remained very high. Uh, 89% felt somewhat are very safe. 7% felt somewhat or very unsafe. Uh, this one probably received the highest level of status or feeling of being safe of the five, uh, that we studied. We asked a new question about whether, when they, how safe they felt when attending events in Rancho Cordova. You can see 76% felt somewhat are very safe. Um, 7% felt somewhat or very unsafe. Um, I I don't know, um, I think it'll be interesting to keep this question if if you do this again, uh, and see how this compares. You know, with so much going on in the media about the things that have happened nationwide, uh, I don't know if the unsafe is a function, that's a function of the nationwide issues that that we've seen over the last few years, um, or something more local. Um, in terms of feeling safe at the local park, uh, you can see here that it's held pretty steady, uh, and safe, unsafe. Feeling very safe or somewhat safe in 2023 and 2025. Big improvement over 2021, uh, when it was only 69%. And the somewhat are very unsafe is again, kind of held fairly close to the same. Uh, we asked, um, when they were shopping in Rancho Cordova, how safe they felt. You can see that, uh, on the, those that felt safe or somewhat are very safe, that percent has increased up to 81%. Uh, however, uh, the somewhat are very unsafe, this, these were the highest percentages of in the five venues. Uh, it's still a relatively low amount, but this was still the highest of of the five. Then we asked respondents how they rated. Then we asked respondents how they rated the Rancho Cordova Police Department. We had four dimensions that we studied. I'll tell you right up at the, at the beginning, two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-five were very strong, and they were all better than they, than occurred in two thousand twenty-one. We, in terms of being involved in the community, eighty-two percent rated the police department as very good or good, only two percent rated it as poor or very poor. Big improvements here, and especially in comparison to two thousand twenty-one. In terms of helping citizens, again, you can see here how in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-five, the percentages very good and good were, were kind of off the charts compared to two thousand twenty-one. Again, a big improvement, and you can see the poor, very poor has gone down again slightly, but nevertheless, only four percent rated the police department poor in helping citizens. Treating people fairly, same thing. You see in two thousand twenty-three and twenty-five, seventy-six to seventy-eight percent of the people rated the police department as very good or good, six percent rated it poor, very poor. And finally of these, being able to respond quickly when needed, same story, two thousand twenty-three and twenty-five, it was eighty percent rated the police very good or good, and six percent, which is the lowest, rated it poor, very poor. This, I have to tell you, mystifies me. I have worked with a lot of different organizations over the years conducting studies, many of them in the healthcare arena dealing with emergency rooms. I have, in the forty years I've been doing this stuff, you never see really high ratings for responding quickly. Okay? Because if somebody has an emergency, it's never fast enough. Okay? No matter how fast it is, no matter how great a job the police do, no matter a great a job emergency room people do, if you have an emergency, you want it faster yet. So somewhere along the line, the police are doing a great job in responding quickly to get this low of rating, poor, very poor. I, I think that, that, not many things surprise me anymore in my life. That one surprises me just in general. That's a tremendous rating. Lastly, we asked how you'd rate the city in providing information about its programs and services. Seventy-five percent gave a very good or good rating. You could see that this has improved substantially from two thousand twenty-one. Seventy-five said, percent said very good or good, only six percent said poor, very poor. And that, that percent has gone down. So the providing information about programs has really improved itself over the last three studies. And then we asked the main source of information, where they get it. I can tell you fifty-one percent of the, excuse me, fifty-two percent of the respondents cited city service, city sources, whether they be city printed material, city's website, or city's digital newsletter. Fifty-two percent cited city, and fifty-one percent cited electronic methods such as social media, website, digital newsletter. Obviously, the, the, still the largest one is the city mailers and brochures at thirty-one percent. I think a couple of things that I, I noticed here, word of mouth has gone down a little bit from fourteen percent in twenty, or excuse me, two thousand twenty-one to ten percent this year, and radio, television, and newspaper, down from ten percent to six percent. So the big guns seem to be in city sources, and the big guns seem to be using electronic, and the city's done a very nice job in, in putting together the, the information packages as shown on the left side of the screen.
I'm glad that late night comics is not on the list.
Yeah.
Does, I mean, because there were national polls that said, where do you get your news? And late night comics was, you know, it, it ranks up there for people, which is terrifying.
Yeah, there was always open-ended, and I don't, I, I have not seen that one.
That's good.
Yeah.
The social media one, though.
Yes.
Is any of that of city origin, or is that non-city origin, social media?
I think that's non-city, but is there some city in that?
I mean, we definitely are on social media, but I don't know.
It's probably mixed. We didn't specifically say city-owned channels. We just indicated social media. I don't know if that was in any of the...
Yeah, and, no, and actually, we did not, but I think that's something, again, going into the future, we ought to break that out to see if it is city.
Yeah, that, that would be interesting, because you know, the, the algorithms that run social media are outrage machines, right? So to the extent social media is being driven by the outrage machine of the social media company, that's not in our interest. To the extent that number is coming from us, that isn't our interest.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and we did not break it out, but, but again, going down the road, if you do this, it definitely should be.
Well, the point is forty-four percent is online. Versus print, so look for sustainable options, communications team. Thank you.
Yes. Overall, ninety percent agreed that you could have a good quality of life living in Rancho Cordova. Over fifty percent feel that the image has improved mainly because of the quality of streets and infrastructure, improvements in parks and amenities, and the businesses and growth. Most rated the city services very positively. The only exception to that is addressing homeless issues. More than eighty percent were satisfied with their experiences when they contacted the city. And again, it seems to be coming more electronic than in person or by phone. It seems to be moving that way. Seventy-five percent were satisfied with the information the city's providing. Seventy-five percent felt safe in the venues that we identified. Seventy-five percent, at least seventy-five percent rated the police department on all of the dimensions we studied. Overall, there were very few poor, very poor ratings. I, I did run statistical tests to see if there were differences based upon age, ethnicity, income, things like that. There really weren't anything major, and part of that is simply because there just isn't a lot of negative. And to do some of these tests, you need, you need more negatives and more positives, and there just isn't. And again, I think that the findings in two thousand twenty-five at least were consistent with and better in some respects in two thousand twenty-three, and both of those were definitely better than two thousand twenty-one. I know things have gone long, so I will stop, and if, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Go ahead, council member.
If you put an error bar on these, how large would it be?
The error? I ran the statistic, the standard deviations of all the questions. The two that had the highest standard deviations, one was point, two-point-one-two, and that was for question asking the satisfaction with contacting the city by telephone in, or in person. And the error level was point-two-two, which, when you're using categories, is insignificant. So very, that was, that was the worst of them. And so the error level is very low. I know people like to think in terms of is it below five percent? And when you're using categories, you can't do it that way. But this error, there's not a lot of fluctuation, though. And, and, and I think if you look at the numbers, you've got almost everything agrees, you know, you got that agreed, strongly agree.
Yeah.
And you got very few down here, so...
Clustering certainly suggests significant in a lot of cases without having to see error bars. I was just sort of curious, you know, when you're, when you're at this N level for our size city, is that a five percent error bar, is it a three percent error bar, is it a fifteen percent error bar? If you did, if you repeated this.
If you did this again, I think it would be well within the five percent.
Like a five percent?
I think you would, yes.
Where do you, so I, I love all the positive...
Before, before we go to council comments or questions, do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay, we can go to council comments.
You sure? Sir, over, no? And, okay. The fact that you turned is crazy. So, dang it. All right, let me get back to what I was saying. Love all the positive stuff. Looks like the trash contract working well, not hearing complaints about that, which is excellent, because we switched our trash collector.
Right.
Always concerned, want to make sure our police has a good, positive dimension in city. Sounds like that's moving up in good areas. It's hard to get a good feel, because I know we got such a diverse city, so trying to grab someone from White Rock Park is totally different than grabbing someone from Anatolia to try to get a gauge on stuff. What, I'm trying to look for the negative, and I know that's terribly improper, but that's the stuff I like to improve on. So I'm not seeing a lot of it, so I'm, I want to know where you're feeling, like, besides homeless services, which is always, it's, it's a struggle, because it's a county ran service.
We should have had a question on schools.
Yeah, that, that would have been a good one.
That would have been.
That, and it already shows, and people don't feel safe in the parks, I see that too.
Yeah.
Besides the schools and the parks, do you see any other services that we directly affect that you're like, if you could focus on? Because the hard part about homeless services is we can throw as much as we want, but it's really ran by the county. They're the ones that have the big dollars, and Stefan and I have banged our head many and many, many a time to try to help. But what other things maybe that you're seeing and you see for cities, because I know you do this for other cities, that you're like, these are the stuff that I've seen that need improvement? You know what I'm saying? I mean, we're always going to strive to try to improve ourselves, but like, what, do you see anything glaring out? Because I love making little changes that can then give a better experience for our city and show how awesome we are in the cho, maybe renaming, choness?
I think, that's an excellent question, by the way. I wish I had a great answer for you. But I think with my first impression of this, and I've actually thought about it a while, the, the one area that I would like to see improvements on is the feeling safe. And I mean, it's a fairly low percent that don't feel safe, and you're, I, I can't imagine getting to zero, because there are some people who, just by their very nature, are never going to feel safe.
Right.
So you, you're never going to get to zero. But it seems to me that if, you know, and anything that could be done to notch down the poor, very, or, you know, the, the feeling of somewhat unsafe and very unsafe makes a happier group, is also going to probably improve even some of the other services that include a lot. If you're not safe, if you don't feel safe, that just...
When did you take this survey? When did you do the survey?
Oh, we did in May.
Okay, yeah, that was before we started doing all the, I bet you now, the stuff, the work you're doing with the post office and catching people at the things with the cameras and stuff, would probably help for that survey to get that clock up. Or anything we can do to make someone feel safer, like the, the, and then communicating that, you know, what Siri always loves, extra, extra social media, bigger things like that. So, yeah.
But the traffic, traffic thing will go up now with all the improvements we're doing on the roads, so something gives them something.
You also have some low-hanging fruit here, because the, the image of the police department is very good.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So having the police involved in improving safety, whatever can be done, I think would probably be also very positive, because obviously, they're happy with the, the police services. And so working with the police department for, you know, in these areas, might get you some benefit as well.
So I'm wondering, this and, and this, I mean, this isn't for this report, but maybe for the next one. You know the people that are super negative, and I know working with negative people is hard to do? It's almost like I want to, the, the ones that are like, I feel safe, I'm like, I, I love that. The ones that are negative, I'm always like, okay, so what can we actually do to change your mind? You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So it's when you say, it's that follow-up question, it's like, you feel unsafe. If we added more cops, would you feel safer? Is it, you want more lights in the areas of Rancho Cordova that aren't lit? You know, it, what is, what is that thing? Because, you know, like you said, if I make the people that are scared feel safe, you know, this is one of the big, major things. I mean, we, we put our, our tentacles in almost everything, but if I can put more lights at the areas of Rancho Cordova that are dark at night, and that would make everyone feel safer, then that's a campaign I can get behind. Right? It's, it's like, maybe the next year we do this, we can, we can follow it with some ideas of, hey, if we added more lights, is it the cops not, not enough cops, a more frequency of cops? Is it the trash on the corner? If it's always just surrounded with the homeless group, then that's such a bigger issue, but it's something we can still work on.
Sure.
You know, helping our homeless navigators get more gauge, maybe that, some of our budget shifts to that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of options, but it's just, I think these are great, and I love that the trend is perfect. Now it's, how can I help that bottom group get up to the middle and that middle group get to the top? And I think that's more with the bottom group, like, the minute they say they're unhappy, okay, great, because we've been waiting to find you guys. The happy ones are like, well, we're, we're going to keep doing what we've always done. It's now, give me some stuff that I can do, and is it even doable? Because some, I'll never get a hundred, but I'm sure hell is going to try to get, you know, an A minus. That's still an F in some people's eyes, but, you know, not in ours.
We definitely, we definitely can add, that's excellent. We definitely can add in issues of why or spring out to asking, would these, which of these would make you feel safer?
Right.
Yeah, definitely, we can work on that and, and get that information.
And if, and if it's something to do with, like she said, with driving, like bull bouts, stuff like that, that would be great to know. This one place, you know, because we're always trying to put in like the, the, the stuff to make the road slower and to make people feel safer. If it's just that, then that makes it easier for us to focus on.
Well, thank you so much. The next survey is next year, two years out. What's our timeline?
Typically, we've done them every two years.
Every two years, okay. So build up your questionnaire for the next two years and start submitting them, so we'll have it.
Yeah, I will tell you, we have had some conversations about potentially doing an annual survey versus in every other year. Just because from an, from an operational standpoint, you know, and adjustments and things that need to be made.
Folks, I think that's a great idea.
Maybe it's a slightly different type of survey that can drill a little bit.
Fair point. We still have to get a closed session, so I think we can wrap up our comments. Thank you for the great presentation here.
Thank you very much.
Again.
I was just going to mention three things.
Go ahead.
And this is sort of looking at the tea leaves. Homelessness, obviously, jumped out of this. If I'm looking for like, what do we, what do we learn from this? Second priority appears to be code enforcement or better businesses. Maybe it's, you know, businesses you want to shop at or restaurants you want to eat at. Both of those fell by ten percent. And beautification had, it was the first time we asked the question, but it was kind of a low level of satisfaction compared to other things. So it's sort of like homelessness, code enforcement, business improvement, and beautification are kind of like a punch list that you were referring to, Garrett.
Yeah, and, and it was funny, is they all kind of lay on top of each other. If a homeless group is coming into community and chasing out the business and scaring the area, probably it all lays down on itself.
Yeah. To your point also, on that skewed results of, you know, completely satisfied, nobody wants to give a five stars. You know, they will always, give them an option of extremely satisfied and satisfied, and then we'll get our, our, our stars. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the time. I mean, this is really good data, many, many hours, I think, spent on this, so really appreciate your time.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we move on to council.
Recording in progress.
I'm going to ask if you have any future agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we go to adjourn to closed session, and before we adjourn to closed session, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
And so we move on to closed session. Do I gavel?
Yes, gavel. You really need to work on the gavel.
I do need to.
Recording stopped.